Oh, I might need help with the.
It's okay. I can do it. I'm gonna turn them all on.
Okay. It's 5:30. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could we have the roll call?
Commissioner Brewer, Commissioner McDaniel.
Here.
Commissioner McCowen.
Here.
Commissioner Jablonsky.
Here.
Commissioner Byrd, Commissioner McClure, Commissioner Griffith.
Here.
Commissioner Kendall.
Here.
And Commissioner Parker.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We'll start with the consent items. Before that, if there's any member of the audience that would like to speak tonight, there should be a slip of paper in the back. Just write your name on it and you can pass it up, or when we talk about an item, you can let us know. And whenever you come up, please speak clearly in the microphone and start with your name and your address. Okay? So, the consent docket has a couple of items. For the minutes, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment, and/or postponement of the minutes as follows. Planning Commission meeting minutes of September 12th, 2024. Item two, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment, and/or postponement of COS 2425-5. Consideration of a Norman Rural Certificate of Survey submitted by Rolling Vista's Limited, Chris Fairchild for Creekside Estates COS for 76.8874 acres of property generally located half mile south of East Lindsay Street and west side of 108th Avenue Southeast. Item three, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment, and/or postponement of COS 2425-6. Consideration of a Norman Rural Certificate of Survey submitted by Greg Skinner, Skinner Land Surveying, for Philkins Ridge COS for 19.87 acres with a variance on the private road width from 20 feet to 12 feet, serving two tracks and a variance in the minimum 10 acres requirement for track one at 9.94 acres and track two at 9.93 acres located at 6607 144th Avenue Northeast. Does any member of the Commission wish to remove an item from the consent docket? Does any member of the audience wish to remove an item from the consent docket? If so, announce which items are being pulled to be discussed in their regular order. All right. Could I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Great. And could we get a vote?
You may vote. All votes have been cast and it carries six to zero.
All right. First item on the non-consent docket. Item four, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment, and/or postponement of ordinance O-2425-8, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section 36-2 of the City of Norman so as to remove all of Block One of the Second State University addition to Norman, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the RM-6 medium density apartment district and place same in the SPUD, Simple Planned Unit Development District, and providing for the severability thereof at 310 East Boyd Street. Could we have the staff presentation?
Hello. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. I am Kelly Abel with the Planning Department. And on tonight's agenda, we have a rezoning from RM6 medium density apartment to SPUD, simplified planned unit development. This will be for a new seven to nine story, 250-unit multifamily apartment building with podium-style parking. There is the subject tract area. This, everywhere around, I mean, to the north, south, west, and east of this property is all multifamily area. And then, as you can see, the, there's railroad tracks just to the east of the subject parcel. Here's kind of an aerial overview so that you can see. The subject property is currently occupied by Ray Apartments, which are older apartments, and the proposed project will increase the number of apartment units on the tract of land. To the east is the Mont, and there's a gas station there. And if you go past the intersection, there is more multifamily residential there. This is to the north of the parcel, and it's all multifamily residential. This is to the south, and it's all multifamily residential. And this is to the west. I believe that that's the engineering area of campus. If you go down to where you can see those traffic lights, Campus Corner is there, just on that northwest corner. Here is the proposed site plan, landscape plan, and the SPUD does meet all of the required zoning regulations for the exterior building materials landscaping and parking. Gunnar Joyce is here with any questions you may have. Staff is also available, and we forward this item to you for consideration.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
Where is the parking going to be in this, in this eight-story structure?
The bottom two, the bottom two stories.
Good. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff? If not, we'd like to have the applicant presentation.
Awesome. Good evening. Gunnar Joyce, on behalf of the developer, which is Trinitas, and with us with Trinitas is Frank Rokio, the representative of the development group. And just like you heard, this is a really exciting student housing project here, just south of Boyd. It's a 2.55 acre site, and really, all the adjacencies, just like Kelly said, are multifamily. There's some single-family houses that are just to the south that are owned there, you can see on screen, by the university. So, everything in red on this map is university-controlled and owned. And so, as you can see, the adjacencies really are OU and multifamily. So, this is a project that we think is a great location for a private student purpose-built development. Existing zoning, as you can see, is RM6. We're here for a rezoning, but we're not really changing the use. What we're changing is the allowed density. And so, we're really an infill development here on a site that already is an older apartment complex, but we're going from about 65 units upwards to a maximum of 250 units. And so, really, an infill project right here on campus, a really great location. This is preliminary site plan. It meets the code recommendation of 1.2 parking spaces per dwelling unit. And Commissioner Griffith, you've nailed it. This is really a first of its kind in Norman, a podium project. So, the parking's on the bottom, and the residences are on the top. That being said, though, you can see some of the parking plan right on screen has a couple parking spaces that are actually below ground, and then the ground level will have the leasing and amenity office right on Boyd, and some residential units on that alleyway. So, it's kind of colorized there in yellow. So, you won't drive around the project and just stare at the parking garage. The ground level and the second level, that really the interior is all parking, will have units and amenities looking out so that when you drive by, you're not looking at a parking garage, you're looking at units and amenity spaces. Preliminary floor plan for the upper floors, as you can see, no longer parking in the middle, but more units. And then, right there in the center, in the heart of the development, is the usable open space courtyards. So, the first one to the north is kind of a outdoor courtyard area, seating, amenities, grills, cookout places. And the one to the south, that white box, is a pool. So, a pool on the south courtyard. An additional amenities sprinkled throughout. So, there's a fitness center and possibilities for other amenities. And one of the premier plans for an amenity is the very top floor, maximum allowance to go all the way up to nine stories. The top floor will actually have a unit taken out as a amenity space where they can look out onto campus, see the stadium. So, really, an exciting, beautiful opportunity there for rooftop amenity. The site really is very walkable. That's kind of one of the features of the project and why Trinitas is so excited about the site. It's essentially a next-door neighbor to the Sarkis Center, which is 15 stories tall. So, this, this one will be really the tallest residential-only apartment building in Norman, with Callaway being one of the other ones at five stories to the south. This one, seven to nine, maximum of nine stories. Sarkis at 15 right there, so it won't be too out of the norm for the area. And then, Campus Corner, as you can see, just off the, just off Boyd to the north, the library's called out there, and then the stadium. It's about a 10-minute walk to all these places. The north end of the stadium was about an eight-minute walk. Campus Corner's about a five-minute walk, so extremely walkable site. And there it is in context. This is not a plat, so like the next couple items, you'll see you'll vote on multiple items. This is just a rezoning because it's already a platted lot. That would mean that the developer did not have to do a preliminary drainage report and did not have to do a traffic study. That being said, Trinitas, being a good player and wanting to make sure that their project would work, did those both voluntarily. And as you can see, the drainage plan is to take the stormwater and run it along the east side where the, you know, the neighbor is the railroad. And we talked to them when they came into the market, and they immediately jumped on this, but mentioned Norman's love for stormwater management, best management practices and LIDs. And you can see right there, the green on the east, the retention area, is a bio-retention filtration area. So, kind of a LID and substantial landscaping all around the site. So, they heard, you know, the community feedback of the importance of stormwater management, and they're going above and beyond with BMPs and LIDs on site. Also, with traffic, they didn't have to do a traffic study, but did a traffic analysis anyway, and they will utilize the existing alleyway on the western side of the property. So, right now, the Ray access is off of Boyd Street. That access is being removed, and they're gonna back it up off of the intersection away from the railroad track and use the alleyway. The developer, at developer cost, will improve that alleyway to make sure that it has the capacity and ability to serve the project. We have no protest on this item, and happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions for the applicant? I have, I have one question. I was looking at the document. Could you tell me a little bit more about the signage? I thought that I read that there's a plan to have LED-backed signs. Are these gonna be signs that are dynamic or static? And, and while you're talking about it, I don't think I saw something we usually see, which is a statement about complying with the standard commercial outdoor lighting.
So, the last one, standard commercial outdoor lighting will apply since it's a multifamily project. So, absolutely does apply, and that's a good call out. The signage one is really the only recommendation, or excuse me, request, I think it's on one of these site plans, specific to this developer, is a monument, basically ground sign at the intersection of Boyd and the existing alley. That is really the only project-specific request. All the other additional language is really kind of language that we've started utilizing because of feedback we received, not at this stage, but when we go get building permit stage. A lot of times, projects, especially multifamily, find out that Norman's signage allowances are less than what they're used to in other areas. And so, a lot of times, you'll see either a board of adjustment, or someone will come back to you guys for signage-specific allowances. And so, we have done what we have seen other multifamily users want. The, that language is not specific to Trinitas. There's no plans for a dynamic or video sign.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicant?
I was on City Council when it was proposed to explore the possibility of high-density housing in Norman, and no one wanted it. And so, I can't tell you how excited I am to see this come about for students, and the possibility for this kind of development to show up in other areas of Norman. And in the walkability of campus or downtown, I, it just warms my heart to see this happen. So, I'm, you have my wholehearted support in this, so.
Thank you, Commissioner.
For what it's worth.
Yeah, I'd like to echo those sentiments. I think it's a great location for a project like this. With the university growing, there's a substantial need for more housing. And this puts the housing in a place where, you know, the cities aren't, the streets aren't gonna be clogged with cars. People can walk straight to campus. You know, you highlighted Campus Corner and the library and other parts of campus. I think it's great. You know, I had a chance to meet with the developers last week, and they pointed out, there might be one small issue with parking. You know, what if there needs to be more parking? But they had a plan to address this by letting students use overflow parking in commuter lots at OU. So, I agree with my fellow commissioner. I think it's great that we're gonna see higher density. I think it's a great location. Nine stories sounds tall, but it's not tall when you put it next to Sarkis, which is significantly taller. Are there any other comments from the Planning Commission? All right. If not, then I'll, I will entertain a motion. And a vote, please.
You may vote. All votes have been cast and it carries six to zero.
All right. Moving on to items five and six. Consideration, item five, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment, and/or postponement of ordinance O-2425-9, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section 36-201 of the Code of City of Norman so as to remove the northeast quarter of section 16 township north range two, west of Indian Meridian to Norman, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the PUD planned unit development district, and place same in the PUD planned unit development district, and providing for the severability thereof, generally located south, south of East Cedar Lane and east of Classen Boulevard. Also, item six, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment, and/or postponement of PP-2425-4. Consideration of a revised preliminary plat submitted by Royce Enterprises, Inc., and Sooner Investment Dev Company, SMC Consulting Engineers, PC, for Armstrong Bank consolidation project, a planned unit development for approximately 40.41 acres of property generally located at the southeast, sorry, at the south of East Cedar Lane and east of Classen Boulevard. Could we have the staff presentation?
Good evening again. I'm Kelly Abel with the Planning Department. On tonight's agenda, we have a rezoning from a PUD to a new PUD and a preliminary plat for a proposed commercial and retail development. There is the subject tract. So, the subject property was originally zoned I1 light industrial and was rezoned to a PUD in 2023. The original PUD included commercial office and senior living, and the new PUD will be mostly commercial office and retail. This is a fast-growing area in, on this little section of town here. The last time I was here at Planning Commission, we were doing another new business that was just up the street. The subject property is mostly vacant. Armstrong Bank is in the north, like northwest, towards the top of the V area there. It's on the northwest corner. Again, here's the aerial view, just to kind of give you a better, better idea of what you're looking at. So, here, you're facing north, and that's actually the backside of Walmart, right there on the left-hand side of the screen. To the west, off of Classen Boulevard, that's like a little industrial area there. And there's Oklahoma Direct Trucks, Quality Towing, and DeLeese Brothers is just outside of that frame, or outside of the picture frame there. And then, to the east of the subject tract is the Links Golf Course and Apartment Buildings. And then, this is actually facing south, and when you get down to that next intersection, Post Oak Storage and a Church is there. This is a picture of the subject property. Here is the proposed site plan, and the PUD does meet all of the required zoning regulations for exterior building materials, landscaping, and parking. The site plan also, this one shows the landscaping areas. And Sean Rieger and his team are here to answer any questions you may have. Staff is also available for questions, and we forward this item to you for consideration.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? I do have a question. In the details, I was reading under the open space, and it said there's no maximum on impervious surface. Was I reading that correctly? And also, when the, when the site plan doesn't exactly match what the words are, there's always some confusion on what carries, because the, the PUD is supposed to lock in the details. And when I look at the site plan, I see plenty of green.
Yes. There's lots of green. I don't recall there being impervious surface requirements in the PUD.
I'll ask the applicant. My second question is about the setbacks off of 24th. It says that they're 10 feet. If this were commercial, what would the setbacks be?
15.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for staff? If not, we'll take the applicant presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Kelly. Doing a great job. First few times she's done this up here, so we appreciate her work. Representing the applicant, in this case, Sean Rieger. We have the full team here with us tonight. This one's gonna seem like deja vu to you, because you have seen this before, and just about a year ago, you saw this site. The reason we're before you is because we have now had a real retailer come in to use this site. You might recall, a year ago, there was discussion about why are we doing such a large tract when all we had was a little bitty bank? You might remember that discussion, and the reason was because by law, by your law, when we preliminary plat a site, we have to do the entire common ownership. So, we're required to do the entire site as a preliminary plat. That's why we were before you last time. And then, that sort of water falls in, that when you have, when you're preliminary plating the whole thing, you kind of have to rezone the whole thing, too. So, that's why we were here last year to do this whole site for Armstrong Bank as a branch bank on the west side. Well, since then, we have had a retailer come into place on this project that now is ready to take a major piece of the rest of it and put it forth. But the site plan didn't match, so we have to come back in front of you to change the site plan. They also wanted to have private roads internal instead of public. And then, there were some signage requirements that they had very specific to what they do that we had to amend to. So, that's the only reason we're before you tonight is for those three reasons. Otherwise, we would not be standing before you on any rezoning because it's already zoned for the uses. It's just those three issues. We would be replating again because the plat is changing, but the zoning wouldn't, wouldn't change. So, let me take you through it. You might recall, this is a 40-acre site. It was previously rezoned, and this, again, is just to change the site plan, the signage, and the private roads. Just a reminder, there's no WQZ, no floodplain, a pretty clean site, just south of the Walmart Supercenter. And in context, you can see it here, as Kelly showed you, just south of the Walmart Supercenter, just west of the Links Development, and on the east side of Classen Boulevard. And just to show you again, kind of highlight what Kelly said, not only our population in Norman is growing, but also south. If you looked at Noble in this area, it is booming. There are major subdivisions being built on the north side of Noble right now, and you see them all across the street, you see, all across the screen. You see the Norman city limits right there. On the right side, you see an area of dirt. That is all gonna be subdivisions. That whole area of land that is just south of Norman will be solid subdivisions. It's in plan right now. It's under construction right now. So, not only our population in this area is expanding substantially, so is Noble's in this same locale. So, what's being proposed tonight is, you see it outlined in red, is the major retailer that's coming in. And I apologize that I am not able to tell you who this is. I'm under a non-disclosure agreement to not disclose who this retailer is. But, so unfairly, I'm probably gonna tell you this, but I will tell you, I've grown in Norm, grown up in Norman. up in Norman. And my whole life, I've heard the issue of east side of Norman doesn't get the premier restaurants or retailers. This is going to change that. This is going to change that benchmark for East Norman after this is approved and gets put into place. I can assure you of that. So this is a major premier retailer in our nation that a lot of communities would want in their community. They're going to build this one and probably just one or two others in the state of Oklahoma as their next new projects. And we're lucky enough in southeast Norman to get that. And realize what I just said, East Norman is going to get a major premier retailer to come into, into its market. Along with this retailer tends to come major restaurants and other uses all around it. So we're very excited about this. As we go through the process deeper, I think we will probably be able to tell you what that is, the council members and others, but at this point, we're not. But that is the change. And you see the site plan right there. So what has changed is basically west of the, the main road, and I'll show you a side-by-side here in a minute. But basically, the green space, Commissioner Jolonski, you asked about impervious. I want to make sure you understand, there is no impervious specific requirement within each lot, but the PUD does say that we have to meet 29.7% green space across the entirety of the PUD. And that is subject to the provisions of the code. Let's say we can alter, I think it's 5% or 10% of a PUD, basically, per hour. So, but please don't make the mistake that just because it doesn't have an impervious number on each lot means we can just blanket the site. We cannot. We're, but we're bound by that percentage of green space. So that's there in context. You see it here, again, not a lot of change, except for the large box right in the middle that you see outlined in red. So the uses now are basically the bank is still there, so the bank will still happen across on the left side, then the major retailer, and then additional retailer that most surely will come quickly around this user, and additional restaurants, office, and commercial. A little closer, you can see it right there on the screen. And what I really want to show you is the side-by-side. So on the left is what you approved a year ago, and on the right is what we're asking you to approve tonight. So if you compare these two screens on the left and right, you still see Armstrong Bank on the left side, and really, you still see very much, very similar uses across Classen Boulevard, up and down for the outlots. And then you see three little office buildings on the south end of this site across the bottom. What has changed is the interior part of this site. And this particular retailer basically drives this very specifically. When you deal with retailers of this caliber, you don't really get many choices to do what you want to do. They pretty much hand you the site plan and say, this is what you're going to do, or you're not. And so that is what this particular user has basically dictated on the site for the large box that is in the middle of it. And basically, what that replaces is housing. Don't worry, the next item, we have more housing to get to you, so that we, this one is a, a proposed housing is, is taken away for the senior housing on the top and the multifamily on the right. But again, we have a retailer that I think will be a major influence on East Norman and I think will be a massive sales tax generator for you as a community. So side-by-side, you can see a little bit of difference. The green space is really not that much different. Previously, I think we were 34% green space. On this one, we're 29 point something, so relatively similar. Just the big difference being the big box. The streets in the middle, on the right, are all private, and that is because this retailer does not want to basically allow the public to take care of the streets. They have a higher standard than what the public takes care of. No offense to the city and their great work, but they have a higher standard and so they require those roads to be private. And they take care of them through a property association and a POA that then assesses the development, and they take care of all of the landscaping and the roads themselves. So a major project coming into this area. We're not aware of any protests that have been filed. There were several people that came to pre-development. They were basically the surrounding developers. They seemed pretty happy with it. Again, the only changes being the site plan, signage, private roads, and the preliminary plat to match that site plan. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and we thank you for your consideration.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
First of all, I want to say, I think this is exciting, especially for East Norman. I think it's exciting for Norman in general. So my only comment, question, I'm understanding that's a dry detention pond on the corner there.
Correct.
And I, I don't know if that is a request of the retailer itself, or if that can be somehow utilized to look, I'm just going to say it, less ugly.
Okay.
The detention ponds on 24th are quite unsightly most of the time. And so I, I think that's a missed opportunity for something amenitized, but I don't know if that is allowable under the retailer's guidelines, but if so, I think maybe some consideration toward something that looks more in keeping with the line of the retailer, I think it is. So, comment, yeah.
I pointed Terry Haynes over here with SMC. I believe they're both dry and we will look at that after this night and see if there's any opportunity for that, but I appreciate those comments.
One comment to that is if there were some maintenance requirements to make sure, if it's going to be dry, it needs to look nice. So, I mean, I've, I've seen dry retention look kind of ugly pretty quickly if it's not maintained. So that would be the only consideration in line of what, what Commissioner says, was just make sure it's maintained well. Has there been any illusion as to what might the second large retailer be?
No, Commissioner, and that is not a secured tenant at this point. So we do not have a user yet on the other sites, on the, the sort of junior box to the south and the larger one to the north. This particular red outline you see there is about 128,000 square feet. The one just north of it is shown just as a concept, speculative, at about 60,000 square feet. And then the one below it is about 30,000 square feet. Again, just speculative, just concepts, but we're very confident that there will be users coming in next to this quickly.
Awesome. Thank you.
I have a quick question for you. So when I, when I see a, a large parking lot like this, I always think of heat, especially in summer. Has there been any thought put towards how to mitigate that heat using trees and those islands?
Absolutely, Commissioner. You see more islands than you normally see. I hope you recognize that in the middle of this site, that we typically have, a large box has not that many islands. As you see here, this has a significant additional number of islands. We do anticipate trees and greenery in those islands that I think would help with that.
Thank you. If there are no more questions for the applicant, thank you. Are there audience comments? I think we have one. Trey Kilby?
Kirby.
Kirby, thank you. Please step up, speak into the microphones, state your full name and your address, please.
My name's Trey Kirby. I live in Ward 5, 311 Rose Rock Drive over off 60th and Alameda. As he was talking about this, there is a lot of development going on in Noble out there off of Post Oak and Cedar. I have a ranch here in Norman. I produce meat. That's what we do. Since all this development has started, my back hundred-foot of the pasture, I've lost five acres because every time it rains, it goes under in water. We're going to add this much more concrete, and I know he adds retention ponds, but you can do the retention ponds over there off of Indian Hills near Moore every time the roads go underwater. 60th Bridge goes underwater. 48th Twin Bridges go underwater. The more development that goes, the more our roads and pastures go underwater. We have a huge shortage in housing in this town, especially senior housing. There's waiting lists for senior housing. And we're going to take away housing to put in an absolute, a lot of, I mean, look at how much concrete that is that's going to run off. You can't, we get a six-inch or a 10-inch rain, I'm going underwater. My fence is laid over for a quarter mile and I got to take off for my job and I have to go and fix that because the development happens where it happens, but no one ever looks a mile east, two miles east, three miles east. That's where we're all getting swamped by all this water from all this development. And I'm not against development. I'm all about development. I'm a licensed electrician. My brother's a licensed plumber. We've been in this town since 1950. That property I'm speaking of been in our family since 1960 and it's never went underwater. When my grandpa had it, it never went underwater. When my dad had it, it never went underwater. Now my brother has it and I run my cattle on it, and every time it rains, it goes underwater. So when we start thinking about doing stuff like this, Norman does need it, but they need to think about everybody east of it as well and what's going to happen? Because it's costing me a lot of money to stay where my family's been for four generations. And I want to see housing because I have a 21-year-old son and a 30-year-old daughter. I have a six-year-old grandson and a two-year-old granddaughter. I want to see housing here that they can afford to be here. My grandparents, my parents, my wife's grandparents and parents all retired from OU. So I want to be, my son works at OU. I want to be able to see him stay here and fulfill his retirement from OU, but he's got to have housing. So when we let big retailers who don't want their name known, which I think as residents of Norman who pay taxes and are going to take the runoff, we have a right to know who's coming. I mean, it's all fun and games to say, we're going to build shiny and new, shiny and new, and we're going to have all this, you know, we got to think ahead of it. So all I'm saying is, what happens with that housing? Like, we're just going to move it somewhere else now? Are we going to move that farther east? Like, why are we taking away housing?
Thank you very much. And I, I apologize, I forgot to tell Mr. Kirby that we restrict comments to three minutes. He was under his three minutes. Thank you, Mr. Kirby, for, for your comments. Are there any other comments? All right, is there a Planning Commission discussion? Maybe, maybe I'll just say, I'm sensitive to Mr. Kirby's, you know, feelings. My family, they were farmers. I'm also not against development, but I do think it's fair to say, you know, who, who should bear the burden of development? What do you do when the development pushes the water off onto someone else's land and it makes it unusable? I don't have an answer at this minute, but I do think that's a fair thing to, for us There are no other comments from the commissioners? I'll take a motion.
I'd like to comment that I'm sensitive to your desire for more housing for our senior citizens of our, of our city, of which I may not look at, but I'm a lot closer to, to that than young parents anymore. I will be 50 in December. But the, the, there was no definitive plan. It, they had to create a plat to be able to get the bank built. And when they presented it to us almost a year ago, they let us know that, that all of it was speculative except for the bank. So they were very transparent in that a year ago, and they have reminded us of that. I do hope that they will look for opportunities to, to look at housing for, for that demographic in our city because it is, it is needed. There's a lot of us that are aging.
If there are no other comments, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
And the vote.
You may vote. All votes have been cast and it carries six to zero.
All right. Next set of items on our agenda are item seven through nine. Item seven, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of resolution R-2324-76, resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan so as to remove part of the southwest quarter of section eight township eight north range two west of Indian Meridian, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the industrial designation and place the same in the mixed-use designation and change approximately 11.5 acres from future urban service area to current urban service area, southeast corner of Highway 9 and Jenkins Avenue. Item eight, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance O-2324-28 in the ordinance of the city of, in the ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section 36-201 of the Code of the City of Norman so as to remove part of the southwest corner of section eight township eight north range two west of Indian Meridian to Norman, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the I-1 light industrial district and place the same in the PUD planned unit development district and providing for the severability thereof, southeast corner of Highway 9 and Jenkins Avenue. Item nine, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of PP-2324-10, consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Highway 9 and Jenkins M&amp;J Investments LLC, craft and toll for Sooner Village, a planned unit development for 56.54 acres of property generally located at the southeast corner of Highway 9 and Jenkins Avenue. I'll take the staff presentation, please.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I am Justin Fish with the Planning Department. We have a 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan Amendment for the property located at the southeast corner of the intersection of East State Highway 9 and Jenkins Avenue. The applicant is requesting a change from industrial residential designation to mixed use and to change from future urban service area to current urban service area. Currently, they are surrounded by institutional uses, residential to the south, industrial to the east, and I believe also industrial to the northwest. They're proposing a change to mixed use. And accompanying this is the rezoning, a request rezon application. And for the preliminary plat, proposed rezoning from I-1 light industrial to PUD planned unit development. This change would be to support the proposed mixed-use development, which would have a variety of uses, including but not limited to commercial offices and multifamily residential. The project area will be divided into four development areas, housing nine tracts in The property is currently zoned I-1. To the east, there is more I-1. To the south, there is land-zoned A-2 rural agricultural district. And to the west, A-2 and I-1. To the north, there is state-owned property where OU facilities are located. Here's the existing land use. The subject tract is currently vacant. There is nothing on the property. This is a shot looking north of the subject property where there is the National Weather Center. Another shot looking north at the OU Water Tower. A shot west on Jenkins Avenue, looking towards the Norman Water Reclamation Center. In the northwest corner, there is the animal welfare. This is a shot looking east. To the east, there is a pharmaceutical company. Another shot looking east into the property. To the south on Highway 9, looking towards the property, and to the south on Jenkins Here is the preliminary plat, the site development plan, and the open space plan. The applicant has prepared a presentation. Staff is also available for questions. We forward this item to Planning Commission for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the staff? Do have a question. It's, it's in anticipation of some of the audience comments, but, you know, there are ongoing concerns with the Bishop Creek watershed and I'm curious about how the analysis is done on runoff. Do we know, do we know, is there a way to know how much runoff this is going to cause into the creek?
I am unaware of that. They have provided detention ponds to alleviate that problem and there are impervious coverage on different development areas to support that as well.
Yeah, I'll try and help Justin out. I'm Todd McClellan, the development engineer. They're required to submit a preliminary drainage report with the plat, and they do some preliminary calculations to show how they're going to do detention and not release the runoff at above the historic rate. So they have to be at or below the historic rate in order for this to work. And when they final plat, we look, they'll submit another drainage report and we'll look at it again. It'll have much more detailed information at that time.
Thank you. A thought comes to my mind for you while you're here.
Okay.
Do we ever do any sampling so that, to test, you know, after the fact in the city? So once we allow some development to go forward, do we ever go back and, and test to find out if, if we were correct that it did slow down the runoff the way to find out if, if we were correct that it did slow down the runoff the way that we expected?
No, I'm not aware of any testing that we do, other than sampling the water quality of the creek.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for staff? If not, we'll take the applicant presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sean Rieger representing the applicant in this case. And applicant basically is the Farzani family, the Home Creations Group. This is, this is their project, and they're, they're very proud of this project. It is called Sooner Village, and what you're going to see, it really is kind of like a village. It has everything in it. It has industrial, it has retail, office, hotel, gas station. They really envision this to be sort of its own little village. So I mentioned on the last item, we're bringing housing back in. We are on this one, and I'll show you that in just a minute. It's about a 56-acre site, right there at Highway Nine and Jenkins. There is the context again, just as Justin showed you there. So the site is right in the middle. You see the pharmaceutical to the east. You see OU, the National Research, National Weather Center, all of the South Research Campus. I would remind you that there is another major development coming in here. The Advanced Radar Center is going to be built in that area, and then more OU off to the, the northwest there. You see just to the west of the site is the City of Norman facilities, the wastewater treatment plant, transfer station, their weapons range, things of that nature. This site, very important to note, is currently zoned industrial. And so this site as industrial basically has very limited stormwater measurements on it. You can basically cover an industrial site entirely with impervious ground and large, intense uses. This will change that. This takes it down to, and you're going to see the site plan in just a moment, but that will have significant open space, much different than when it's currently zoned. But they have left an area for industrial to buffer that use to the west. They're cognizant of that. They're aware that that is the City of Norman, pretty intense uses of the animal shelter. And so you're going to see on the site plan how they have creatively designed it so that the, the west end buffers those uses and really protects the rest of the development from it. Just to remind, we've heard before, some people have said that this has floodplain on the property. It does not. The floodplain is off property to the east. If you see that site right there outlined in red, this is from your GIS. There is significant sanitary sewer easements. You see the green ones coming in because they are all going to the wastewater treatment plant to the west. But those are just easements. That is not floodplain. That is not a WQBC zone. The floodplain is to the, the east, and it is Bishop's Creek, as you see there, Bishop's Creek, which you asked Commissioner about the watershed. I'm going to show you that in just a moment. This is Bishop's Creek that extends all the way up into a major part of Norman, including where we're standing tonight, is basically the Bishop's Creek watershed. So it's a major collector of all of Norman as it extends down through this, this area. On the left is the existing 2025. You see it there. It's basically industrial. There is a small part, and your staff report talks about it, that is a future urban area. That's a, basically, an issue of whether it is ready for development or not. A small part of this site is about 11 acres of that. It is all use-zoned or planned for industrial. We're going to change that and say that we want it to be mixed-use and, and put it all into the current urban condition. On the right, it's light industrial. It doesn't really show up on the colors there, but that is all gray, and we're going to change the zoning to PUD. That's the plat. Anthony Hamley with Kindle, with Crafton Toll is here to talk about any of the specifics that we need to talk about on the plat. But basically, this is zoned out in about four different areas. And so your PUD talks about this as development areas, and then it breaks down further from that. But the first development area, development area one, is basically everything commercial. So gas station really is what is anticipated on the upper left, and then you get into restaurants, retail, commercial, office, mixed-use, things of that nature. They anticipate on the right, a hotel would be their choice because they think that might be a very good use next to the South Research Campus and the National Weather Center. There is really not a hotel in this area of any kind, very close. They think they can make that work pretty significantly to put it right south of the, of the weather center. So then the second area development, and this is what I was talking about just a moment ago, is development area number two on the lower left, and that is basically more warehouses, self-storage units, industrial basically. They've left that lower-left area as basically industrial so that it buffers the rest of the site from the city uses that are across the street to the west. Development area number three is the bottom right, and that is basically duplexes. So that is housing of low to medium-density housing, about 20 units of housing there. And then right in the middle, in the kind of mustard yellow, is development area number four. That is townhomes, apartment homes, apartments, could be three, four-story walk-up right in the middle of the site. It breaks down further, and we won't, I kind of described them already, but then within each of those zones, you get into different tracks, the plating of the tracks, and each of those have sort of their own planned site plan as well. This is the detention basin, and Anthony's here to talk about it more in depth if we need to, if we have questions about it. But everything is detained. And you might recall from past projects, I will say, that there sometimes is a decision point whether you should detain or not. We've come to believe that neighbors want it detained, and so we do that. There's possibility that sometimes you don't detain when you're at the bottom of a basin, and Todd could tell you much more than I could about that. We are at the bottom of the basin with this project, meaning at the very bottom of the entire Bishop's Creek drainage basin, but we've chosen unilaterally to detain all the water that comes off the subdivision and slow release. That's a choice the developer made. This is the colorized site plan. You see it here, basically private park solution in the areas that extend up through the middle, and really significant green space, broader than just the easements themselves. And you see the different uses now in a little bit of more colorized fashion. You see the warehouses on the lower left, the self-storage units on the middle left, gas station, retail, commercial on the upper left, and then across the top, more commercial, and then the more intense multifamily, and then the duplexes across the south. So that's kind of the colorized. 155 housing units are shown on this project, fairly significant because we think there's really a possibility of these housing units to, to support the student housing that is burgeoning in, in OU right now, and to help the workers that are, are burgeoning down on the South Research Campus. So we think that could be good. And this is a slide we've put in front of you many times. I'm going to keep putting in front of you because I think it's something that we all have to understand, and that's the AIM Subcommittee has come up with a number, 23,225 new housing units by the year 2045. And if you run that math, that's 21 years from now. That means we need about 1,106 new housing units, and they can be single-family or multifamily, but we need about 1,106 per year. The bottom chart is your chart. This is from Sarah Kaplan that put this together for a presentation we do together sometimes. And you see on the bottom, that is every year since 2000, of all of the housing units, multifamily and single-family combined, that is graphed out. The red line is where 1,106 housing units would be. And it doesn't take a lot of intuition to see. We haven't, rarely have we built anywhere near 1,106 housing units anywhere in any of these years. In fact, the only time we've done it is when there has been significant student housing projects and things of that caliber that have come online. So we do need more housing. We continue to bring you more housing. I think the, the development community is hearing that, and that's why you're starting to see more housing units come onboard, including this one. So the Farzani's Mohammed has put these together for us tonight. He's, he's really a kind of a visionary in a lot of ways. I wish you could see more of his work because he does this pretty often, actually, and he put together sort of a, a show of what he anticipates the development to look like. We're looking east. On the left side of that screen is the anticipated gas station, and then what they anticipate is really sort of a tight mix of the different uses in a, in a walkable fashion with just sort of narrow streets that basically have angled parking in front of the housing and that walk, that extend around the development. We're looking east. You see, off to the east is the, is the more, the smaller multifamily. And I should say, this one on the right in the foreground is mixed-use. So again, the PUD allows for mixed-use, so that would be commercial with residential on top, is sort of what they anticipate. This is the ground floor where, again, they, they anticipate it to be angled parking with sort of a small street network that winds through this village and has folks walking around the entire project. And then that would be the hotel, just a very schematic-looking hotel at the end there that's looking east down that main drive as it comes into the development. So in summary with that, we're changing from I-1 to mixed-use, very different than what's currently zoned from I-1, which allows us to do a lot more green space and bring in the housing units and things of that nature. Much greener, really intended to be a downzoning. It changes the uses from industrial. It keeps the industrial uses, though, where there is the, the uses to the west, the city uses, as a buffer. It's 155 new housing units, and it's much-needed commercial next to the South Research Campus. I know there was a time, I, I believe they were busing people from the South Research Campus up to downtown Norman for them to have eating options at lunch because there was simply nothing down here for them to go to during lunch. So I think this could help that quite a bit. I do want to cover a couple of things as far as stormwater goes. Commissioner, you asked about it, and this is at the bottom of the Bishop's Creek Drainage Basin. This is obviously something that we've dealt with before in terms of protesters and people to the south here, but I want to make sure we understand what the facts are. And if you look at this document, you see at the top, you see OU at the top. Right below OU is the mustard-colored site where we're at tonight. And Bishop's Creek, you see the blue line extending down through the middle. That's the creek. What you see south of our site is, very quickly south of our site, a little bit off, off the edge of the boundary, is the light blue floodplain of the Canadian River, and then you see the striped floodway of the Canadian River. So we are right above the entirety of the floodplain and the floodway of the Canadian River. We've heard before some protesters say that we shouldn't put any more water down into those floodplains and into those floodways. I would just encourage you to consider, you will condemn Norman if that's what you want to decide. Because if you decide that we don't put any more water into the South Canadian floodway, well, you see right there on the screen, Bishop's Creek is the purple outlined area. We are standing in Bishop's Creek watershed right now, tonight. It covers all of OU. It covers all of Griffin. It covers where the Norman Regional Hospital put its new project on Highway Nine. It covers all of the Highway Nine area around Classen Boulevard. It covers that whole area. So if anybody wants to argue that we shouldn't put any more impervious ground anywhere in the Bishop's Creek watershed because they don't want any more volume of water going south down into the Canadian River floodway, then you have to, as a policy, treat us the same as everybody else you treat in the Bishop's Creek watershed, and that means you can no longer approve any projects in the Bishop's Creek watershed. So that means Griffin doesn't get developed. That means the area around the Norman Regional Hospital on Highway Nine doesn't get developed. That means the rest of Classen area doesn't get developed because it all drains down into that floodway and that floodplain. The more important decision is to make sure that we have engineered it properly, and we do that per your codes, per Mr. McClellan's review, for everything you tell us what to do on how we engineer it. And I would remind you that that's through the engineering design criteria, which you just updated in the last couple of years, an extensive process to update how we engineer stormwater. That just happened. And so we have to meet all those requirements. We have to engineer it to make sure that it's engineered to match what you say is proper planning and engineering, and we absolutely do that. That's our, that's our duty. We don't hold it lightly. We intend to do it, and we will do it. And in fact, we won't get a building permit if we don't do it because Mr. McClellan will make sure that we've done it. So stormwater is an issue that's important to us, as it is to everybody else. We have to do it properly. We will do it properly, but we cannot have a policy that says we can't have any more impervious ground in the Bishop's Creek watershed. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I thank you very much, and we ask for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant?
Do you know, I'm assuming that's, that all the development phases are not going in at once, but do you know the order?
I don't, Commissioner. I think the gas station would be very quick. That would probably be the first one, and then we anticipate the commercial just next to the gas station. I do think they want to put the housing in relatively soon, though. The Farzani's obviously are home builders. That's their passion, and I believe they do intend for that relatively soon.
That, that makes sense. I would encourage housing as a, as, over the, I realize you need the buffer given where it is, but I'm very appreciative that this is a downzone from complete industrial. We all know what that can look like, but I would hate to see that get built and not the housing first. So. Thanks.
I just have a question, since on my mind is high-density development. Is it possible that they could consider something more than three stories in, in, in terms of a multi-story, high-density, since it's already?
Yeah. I should have said, Commissioner, parts of this is four and five stories, so they have done that. We don't have seven, nine, 10 as the last item before last had, but they do anticipate part of this going to four and five stories, I think. You do get into a very different type of design. Let's just make sure. You make a very different leap point when you go up to above five stories because it's a different type of construction. You get into significant different parking issues and things of that nature. So I, I don't anticipate that, that this particular developer would do something like that, but I think they would maximize the height to, to the extent they can.
Parking would be the lower levels and residential above. I mean, easy peasy.
Yeah, it could. They're excited about it. They have done a project somewhat similar to this, I'll just say elsewhere in the nation, not in Oklahoma, and, and they've had great joy doing that. So I think they, they would probably want to emulate that here.
I understand. Just a thought.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Are there any other questions from the commissioners? If not, we'll take audience comments. So I'll remind everyone, you have three minutes. If you would like a warning at 30 seconds, I'm happy to give it to you. When you come up, please state your name clearly. I'll read off the names. And I was gonna, I was gonna take it in the order it was given to me. State your name and your address, please.
Sonia Potts, 3620 Barwick Drive. I can't say in three minutes nearly everything I want to say, so maybe I'll get back up here again. A few of you may have been on the Planning Commission, but I don't think very many, and maybe just one that's here tonight. When we've been here before, we own land south, down on the South Canadian River. Bishop Creek runs across our land. Oh, joy. That's amazing. And I think maybe Mr. Jablonsky was on when we came before and brought pictures. If you could see what Bishop Creek looks like right now, you would be totally appalled. And I would be happy and would love to take any of you down there because we have blockages in Bishop Creek that are unbelievable. And I'm not talking about just the size of this room. I'm talking about, I don't know, two or three times the size of this room, and not just one blockage. We have gotten zero help from the City of Norman in cleaning out Bishop Creek. Most, some people, we've had some city council members come down and look. We have not, not had any city staff come down and look because they know what it looks like, and they don't want to, they don't want to look at it. I would welcome anyone of the city staff to come down and look at it. So of course, we're going to oppose anything that runs across our land. We've got Norman, City of Norman trashcans. We've got soccer balls. We've got Christmas trees, and these are flowing out in the middle of our hay farm, in the middle of our hay pastures. And it's the, you wouldn't believe it, and I would be so happy to take any of you down there to look because it, you would be appalled. And this is our stormwater creek. This is one of our main stormwater creeks, and it happens to run across our land. And it's the city stormwater creek. So wouldn't it make sense that they would help us keep it cleaned out so that the water can run down the little creek that started very small? And I feel Mr. Kirby's pain because we're in the same issue. Just because the city can run that stormwater down doesn't mean they shouldn't come and clean their creek out. I mean, we've been here before. I should have brought some of my pictures tonight, but when this issue comes up before city council, we will be there with our pictures. So that's why. So that's why I'm protesting it as I would protest, you know, anything. But almost everything runs down Bishop Creek. It's the biggest. It, it drains 10 square miles.
Thank you, Ms. Potts.
I think that's right.
Thank you. Next on my, my list is Kevin Potts. Please state your, your name and your address. And if you'd like a 30 second warning, just tell me.
Kevin Potts, 3620 Barwick Drive. My wife Sonia brought up a lot of the situation and my biggest issue is that stormwater and how it's handled and how it's been unmitigated in the past. And also, I just want to make sure, and Sean Riggers said that he's gonna, the detention ponds will be sized adequate. They'll take care and keep, they'll control runoff of all that impervious surface. But in the past, what's set up, what's planned doesn't always get done adequate, doesn't get done properly and it ends up being undersized or it ends up kind of going away or they, they move things around, things don't get adequately. Really, the design, the initial startup is good, but through the process, something changes by the end of the job when it's complete and it's final, things change. So you, we have to, I want to be aware of that. I want assurances and I'd like Todd to make sure that these are sized properly because like my wife said, we've got major problems. We had two major floods, just August 11th, five, six inches of rain. And then in September, we had about 100, 250, 200 acres under a foot of water and it was there quite a while. And we had those major blockages pushing that water. And I'm hoping the fee in lieu of any detention in the future has gone away. That is not an option on the table because right now on other developments up north, Eagle Cliff Edition, there's about three outflow points up north of us that flow under our property and create just, just damage. It's just devastating to go down there because it's beautiful piece property. But it's just, it's very frustrating to think, like my wife was saying, you could allow that water into Bishop Creek, but you're not going to maintain it and get it out to South Canadian River. So it's creating some issues big time there. So just proper maintenance of that seems really important because one inch of rain in one hour, 625,000 gallons a minute flowing through Bishop Creek. That will put a foot of water over two acres in one minute. So that's kind of the, just the massive, the massive amount of what's going on here. And I know what's the other, the other issues and other developments have the same problem. So I just want to see when, when things are talked about, that they get done, that goes all through the final stages and that they are adequate to handle that stormwater because that is a big issue. We've, we've had that land since 1960s, several generations now. And I'd like to be able to enjoy it for my grandkids and stuff like that. So I just want to make things, sure things are done proper and that there's no, you know, just, just all of a sudden, oh, we'll decide to do this, we'll do this because we've seen it in the past. There's a history of it. So anyway, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next on my list is Rex and Jan Valouch. Valouch, thank you. And if you'd like, you can each speak for three minutes. Just give your full name and your address. And if you want that 30 second warning, please tell me.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm Jan Valouch and I live at 3661 Jenkins Avenue. My husband and I have lived there for over 40 years. The property has been in his family for over 100 years. They're among the first families of Norman. So the City of Norman and our community is extremely important to us. And I want to thank you very much for having us here tonight. I've written a letter and I posted it back.
Could you pull the microphone back to you a little bit?
I'm sorry?
Yep. Could you pull the microphone toward you just a hair? Thank you.
Sure. I'm sorry, I'm not loud spoken. My students used to complain all the time. But I've written you a letter. It was back in December of 2023 because we've been expecting this meeting every month for over a year now and it keeps being postponed. So I'm glad we're here, but I'll just read it to you. Pursuant to your proposal of rezoning the above referenced 56.54 acres of land, which lies adjacent to the north boundary line of our property, we have serious reservations. The developers who bought the property when it rezoned, not for one purpose, but for a carte blanche, mixed use development of commercial, office, industrial and multifamily, excuse me, residential, which means multi-story apartments and duplexes, which attract renters, not property owners, who are invested in the community. This could adversely affect the property adjacent to my home and the main inlet to the University of Oklahoma, potentially making it resemble Pittsburgh or St. Louis in a very short time. Furthermore, a recently heightened judicial review has found spot zoning a violation of due process and equal protection of the law. Many courts across the U.S. have held that spot zoning must not be arbitrary or capricious. In Blades versus the City of Raleigh, the court emphasized the need for a reasonable basis to justify spot zoning largely in terms of effects on neighboring properties. The whole concept of zoning implies a restriction upon the owner's rights to use specific track for use profitable to him, but detrimental to the value of the properties of others in the area, thus promoting the most appropriate use of land throughout the municipality considered as a whole. To rezone property for the overall good, it must conserve the values of other neighboring properties. Problems arise when a small plot of land is rezoned when it is surrounded by a much larger area uniformly zoned. This creates an attitude of unfairness with neighboring property owners. This proposal to allow for the installation of a convenience petrol plaza, a storage facility, warehouses, townhomes and apartment buildings is likely to devalue our property and our home. Why do people choose to live in Norman rather than Oklahoma City? Because it's not Oklahoma City, right? Most Norman property owners want to live in Norman because it's a sophisticated, multicultural university town that has for generations partnered with the University of Oklahoma to promote a charming, idyllic, small town appeal. Norman is currently in the top tier of university towns in the U.S. If every corner is filled with rental property, truck stops and storage facilities, are we not in danger of losing the very identity that makes us special? You guys, more is not less necessarily better, it's just more.
Thank you. We appreciate, we appreciate everyone's comments. And Mr. Valouch, if you'd like three minutes, just state your name, your address and let me know if you'd like a 30 second warning.
I'm Rex Valouch, 3661 Jenkins Avenue. Now, on this proposal they were coming up with before, there was a few issues. The City of Norman first looked at it and thought about maybe taking Cedar Lane across Bishop Creek and coming in that way. You also have the increased traffic on Lindsay Street, I mean, on Jenkins there. The proposed deal for the city's cost to redo Lindsay, put an intersection there, bring in the, the road across and the bridge was about 28 million at one time for the city's cost to bring this in. From what I've understood, at the last time I heard, that they hadn't given, been given permission to have an access off of Jenkins. They were supposedly pursuing an access off of Highway nine and going through that way. Their drainage, see, that used to be the Navy base when, back in the 40s, when we had a Navy base here. There were some old concrete in-ground structures left, not too many. They went in there and bulldozed everything. There was a retention pond where they initially said they were going to put a retention pond. They wiped it out. Now, right next to my house, there's three five-foot tubes put under a road that go through a gully that's next to my house. That's where they proposed originally to take all the drainage, saying they couldn't take it to Bishop Creek. That cuts across another person's property and goes to Bishop Creek. So if all the drainage retention ponds were going to be put in place, why'd they wipe the one out? It was pretty much where they said that they were going to put one. They wiped out all the trees and everything that were back in there, leaving the perimeter only. So if they're going to have a green zone, nice trees and stuff, why didn't they save some for that? Where they're saying they're going to put the apartment complex, there's a main overhead power line that heads across that corner, which I don't think would be approved to put an apartment complex under. So those are unanswered questions that were put up there before. Has the city actually given permission to get off Jenkins? If they did, is the, is the, is the city going to take the funds and pay for increasing Jenkins to accommodate them? Or, you know, or are they going to bring the Cedar Lane road across? And that requires a barrier distance of 50 feet for a property, for a possible road being taken through there. So, you know, a lot of this didn't come out right. And like she said, as far as looks and stuff, I'm, I've drawn around, gone up north of Edmond up in there.
Thank you.
And seen some nice housing additions and stuff to keep the trees and stuff. That's not what we would get, when we get this done.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Are there any more audience comments? If not, we'll move on to Planning Commission discussion.
Well, I'd like to say thank you to the people who came and spoke tonight. I do think it's a challenge to, to try and move development forward and still be mindful of what that development does to the rest of the community. I don't have any answers, but I do think it's fair to ask questions like what happens when, what flows down the creek lands in your yard? I think that's a fair question. And this is related to the comments from Mr. Kirby earlier, you know, who, who bears the responsibility of the development after it's already done? I think these are fair questions. I think one of the challenges we have in our, the way our culture is designed is that property butts up right against each other and every man can develop his plot almost the way they see fit. And we don't have these natural buffers between plots of land that can absorb, absorb some of these issues. And that's a problem for our city council. I don't have answers tonight, but I think these are fair questions and I think it's fair to expect, expect not to have the can kicked down the road perpetually.
I call a vote, but some of my commissioners look like they, they want to speak. We can, we can have a motion in a second and still have comments after that if people want. Is there a motion?
Well, I'm actually going to ask, would it be okay if the developer address comments about the Highway nine access? And I'm trying to think the other one that I think they can address and also the, the power lines, what that looks like. And Cedar Lane.
Yeah, I think it's fair to.
Yeah.
Back and.
Yeah. I think those are good talking points and I think that should be addressed here.
And I've regretted that I should have mentioned this in my comments. The reason we were postponed so many times is we were trying to work with ODOT to have a connection point up on the upper right part of this site, simply out of our desire to have a second, secondary access point. Oftentimes you want to access the main road at work. We wanted to access Highway nine. We spent a lot of time trying to get that from ODOT and were repeatedly told, no, not going to happen, just forget it. So we abandoned that and that's when we came back to you. There is one other issue, and I know you had several questions. Cedar Lane, the connection of Cedar Lane, I think was mentioned, $29 million. One of the other things we've tried to work on is to find a funding connection to get that bridge done because to connect Cedar Lane all the way across is going to take a pretty major bridge over Bishop's Creek. It is off our, our property, so we don't have the obligation to do that because it's, it's east of the edge of our property. So to get that done is going to take a bridge. I'll say the dirty word TIF. We have discussed that with, with different policymakers in the community to see if they would want to do something like that, that would fund, once this project starts getting built, we've all learned what a TIF is in the last year. It generates taxes. The taxes, if you wish, can be used to put back into some project around it. That would be a natural vehicle to do a bridge like this, is to do something like that that would fund the project and do the bridge. We're open to discussions like that. We're happy to discuss it and consider it. And, and I think some policymakers have been open to it, too. It's probably not the right time for obvious reasons to be discussing something like that. And so I'm not sure anybody really wants to enter discussions like that right now, but it's something that could be discussed as to how we connect Cedar Lane. I know Councilmember Holman has talked from the dais for years of his goal to connect Cedar Lane across that site. It's just really a funding problem. It's a big bill to do that. So that would be something we hope happens. It's not necessary for our project. We don't have to have that happen, but we're happy to be sort of a, a ability to help make it happen if that's something that the city wants to do. Access points, we are fully capable to use Jenkins and in fact, the developer has the obligation to improve Jenkins as the arterial next to our project. So we will have that obligation at our cost to improve Jenkins to accommodate all that traffic. And the traffic engineers here tonight, Todd Butler, if you want to know more details than I can, but just I'll suffice it to say that, that we absolutely have to deal with that. Utilities, overhead easements. There is easements across this property that I'm not sure if the overhead line is already in the easement, Anthony, or, but no. Right. But we as a developer cannot build a project under utility lines. We can't build a project in interference with utilities. So our job at our cost totally will be to make sure that if there are utility lines, and that's not terribly unheard of where lines are on a project that are not inside of an easement, unfortunately that happens. If they're not already in an easement, we'll have to either relocate those facilities to put them into an easement or have to move the easement to be protecting those facilities. So that will be a project that, and that happens through final plating. So when we kind of get deeper in the process, what you approved tonight, what city council approves is what's called a preliminary plat. A preliminary plat is basically just conceptual. It, it basically says this is what we think we're going to do with the water lines, the sewer lines, the detention ponds, the streets, all of that. And your city staff reviews all that and makes sure that it is in line with your ordinances. But then, if that gets approved, what then happens is we go into what's called a final plat. A final plat is basically construction drawings of how we're going to really do this. It's a much more higher level of drawings and engineering. And your staff, again, reviews that in great detail and determines if we have done that properly. First thing they review is to make sure that it matches the preliminary plat because we can't just come in with a different final plat and do something very different. We have to match what we told you conceptually we would do. If we do something very different, we have to be back in front of you to change the preliminary plat. So that's the first look. And then they look at the ordinances of the engineering design criteria and the subdivision regulations and they make sure that with all those utilities and infrastructure, that we build it per year codes. And we're required to do that in great detail. And that's what the engineers carry forward after we go through this process. So, so I would answer that to sort of all those questions of utilities, we have to handle it that way. As to stormwater, Mr. Potts saying, I hope they do it right. We will not get a building permit if we don't match your ordinances and design it per engineering to your ordinances. And that code that we talked about earlier, the engineering design criteria, we have to match that and Mr. McClellan is at the forefront of making sure that we match that and that we meet or exceed that code. So, and the engineers fully know that. We, we don't really waste the time of engineering or effort to design something that we know is not going to get approved. So I hope that answered all the questions?
I think so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll return to the Planning Commission discussion. I, I would like to say we've, we've had some fair attention to what some of the challenges, the future possible challenges, but I'd like to draw, draw some attention to some things that I like about this project. It's well known that we need, we need more housing. This brings in more housing. And also, you know, as some of my fellow commissioners know, I like to ask about the trees and the open space. And I've talked about how land can butt up against itself and you don't have buffers. This, the way, you know, it's a bit of luck where these pipes are laid out that, you know, these buffers are created. And there are several acres of open space and this open space is good because if people see trees and grass. trees and grass and green, it, it improves their quality of life. It also creates space for insects, and I know this is a funny thing to talk about sometimes, but it's that time of the year, if you open your windows, it's good to hear. And so, I'm, you know, I like seeing a project where maybe they can't open their window and it's next to them, but they can go on walks. And so, I think that projects laid out like this with plenty of open space improve quality of life. So, those are some things that I, I like about this. Are there any other comments?
I'd like to second that I, I like seeing the green that is there. I like that it's not a giant wedge of, of cement or asphalt like it could have been. I do like seeing the increased housing, and it's, it's got a niche for every housing level here. I did like hearing that it would be detention, that would be slow release, and I would just comment with, with all of the concerns that were stated, emphasis on exceeding the, the code expectations, I think would be a good faith effort to those citizens that, that live near there. And I would hope that city council can answer questions and discussion on whose job is it to, to clean when stormwater does wash city property into citizens' property. So, unfortunately, that's not something for us to decide, but I do think it's important that they hear that, that we agree it should be discussed.
Kick this out here real quick, but through that area of Bishop Creek, Oklahoma City's doing a, a Deep Fork Trail right now that's up, up next to the river. That's, you know, it's a trailhead with a lot of different things. It's going to be really, really neat when it's done. Maybe something that we want to look at here, because it would create a situation, one, where we use this area, and two, where we would have to keep it clean, which maybe would help the Potts family with whatever's coming down through there. So, I'm just kicking that out.
Appreciate that kind of creative comment. If, if there are no other comments, I'll take a motion.
I'll, I'll move to approve.
And a vote?
You may vote. All votes have been cast and it-
The next item on our list is item 10, consideration of adoption, acceptance, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of ordinance O-2425-6, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending Chapter 26, zoning, sections 36-101, definitions 36-513, residential estate dwelling district, 36-518, RM4 mobile home park district, and 36-564, home occupations, in order to allow home occupations to be carried on in RE residential dwelling district and RM4 mobile home park district, and to redefine, to make language throughout the zoning ordinance consistent and allow additional activities as home occupations with stated restrictions and, and providing for the separability thereof. I think I made a mistake.
No, you didn't. It should be 36.
Someone made a mistake. I think I'm supposed to correct the mistake. Let's see. So, for the record, I'm going to reread, I'm going to reread a couple lines, starting with ordinance O-2426-6, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending Chapter 36, zoning, and then I think the rest of it's okay. Thank you. We'll take the staff presentation.
Hello. Okay, so, Chapter 36 is our zoning code, and we were approached by council to look at some amendments to our home occupation ordinance. As we all know, COVID-19 kind of made people work from home a little more, and we were specifically asked to look at personal services, so like a barber or a salon. These have traditionally or historically been in our prohibited list of uses, so this proposal is to allow personal services as a home occupation. And then there are some additional parking requirements for this use, which I'll get to in a moment. We're also adding home occupation, just the general use category, to RE and RM4. These were left out of these two districts, so they were the only residential districts that did not allow for home occupation, so we just wanted to make it even across the board. And then there are some general kind of housekeeping things. We're trying to switch to dwelling unit or principal unit instead of main building. Sorry, you guys, I'm hopping all over this. And then we all are, are adding a qualifier that it must be someone who's living or residing in the dwelling unit to actually use it as the home occupation. So, you can't, like if Jane was my fellow hairdresser, I could not rent out a space to her in my home. She would have to actually live there to be able to do so. And then we are adding another qualifier that no more than two personal vehicles of customers may be parked within a reasonable proximity of the home occupation premises at any one time. So, this is just an attempt to kind of remember it's a home occupation, so it's meant to be low impact on surrounding. Yeah, so, staff, we're this for your consideration, and we're available for questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant, any questions for the staff?
Applicant, too.
No questions? Well, I guess it's our job to discuss and then vote. Is there a discussion?
I think it's reasonable and fair if those two areas were the only ones left off. It's, it seems like, I'm sure it was just an oversight, but it probably felt personal to, to some, and so I'm glad that it was brought to our attention. The city is, is trying to address that. And I do like the verbiage and the limitations that are placed on the umbrella of, of living types. So, I think, I think it's a positive move.
Thank you. All right, is there a motion? And a vote?
You may vote. All votes have been cast and it carries six to zero.
The next item, next item on our list is miscellaneous comments of Planning Commission and staff. Maybe I'll, maybe I have a miscellaneous comment. It's related to some of the things we've heard tonight about the impact of, of water from one property to another. I think one of the challenges, we had some rain recently, and after, after the rain, I went and looked at the mesonet maps, and it looked like five inches right on top of Norman, and then a half inch everywhere around. Unfortunately, this is likely going to get more common. This is one of the challenges with climate change. I have family in western North Carolina, 20 inches. I have family in Tampa, 10 inches. And so, you know, while we think about the, the issue of water runoff from one property to another, I think there's a question of historic water runoff. And then I also kind of unfairly asked Mr. McClellan, use your crystal ball, look in the future, and tell me how much water is going to come off in the future. And so, right now, you know, it seems like our, our code maybe is designed for historic runoff. It's hard to design it for anything else. But knowing that we have a future that's going to be less stable, meaning when the water comes, it'll come in higher quantities, maybe we can, we can try and think about this and say, how can we, how can we think about what that runoff's going to be when the water comes in bigger waves? So, that's the only comment I have. Do any other commissioners have comments?
I'd like to tack on to that. We have stormwater retention ponds in our neighborhood, and it's actually, I've made it part of my job as the development team to go drive those when we have those major water events. And I take pictures, because I, I always make sure that we don't have a blockage that's preventing drainage from going out at its anticipated rate, calculated rate. And it's interesting to watch, just as a note, it can be done correctly, and I am, of course, biased, but I live it. We, the water rises quickly when that rain falls and it has nowhere to go. Our land is so dry, and it, when it hits in that flash rain, it does nothing but, it, that's it. I mean, it has to go somewhere, and it doesn't really have anywhere to go. So, our ponds rise quickly, but I also monitor how quickly they go down. They're scheduled to go down within 24 hours, back to a normal level. It doesn't take them that long. So, I know that it can be done correctly, and I, like I said, I monitor that to make sure we don't have the issues. And it looks scary when you see it over the sidewalks and up the banks, but that's exactly what it's designed to do. They're retention ponds. I always have people that freak out, and I'm like, has it ever gotten in your yard? No. And that's, you know, that's, that's what it's designed to do. So, I, I know that it can be done correctly. I know that it's frustrating when it's not. So, just to sense, the city of Norman's doing, I think, a much improved job of stormwater management, looking at that and making sure that we do follow what we have to do to make it a, a proper rate of drainage and a proper size detention pond to, and you, like you said, it's hard when we have, when we're seeing rain that we have not seen before. How do you, that can't be in a, now it can be in a historic calculation, but those are, who knows, climate change, right? But, yeah, I just want to echo that it's possible, and I'm appreciative of the city of Norman's efforts to look at the stormwater needs and, what am I trying to say? I appreciate all your efforts toward making that a responsible way to release, to retain and release water.
Any other comments? Even about not stormwater? All right, we're adjourned.